Okay, we have tried to wait for Commissioner Ball, however, he's not going to make it this morning. So at this time, we are here for a special meeting, records of human resources. I'd like to have the governor's prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Father God, we thank you for this time to meet, Lord, and thank you for our jobs, Lord. We just ask that you be with our country, Lord, as we seem to be in trouble. We ask that you be with our leaders, and we ask that you be with us today and be with commissioners as they make important decisions for our county, Lord. Be with us, and God, as through this week, in Christ, and we pray. Amen.
Good morning, everybody. It is September 2nd, 2014, 9:04. This time, we're going to entertain the agenda items. Number one and the only one, human resources county order payroll accounting period adjustment to hear and act upon recommendation by human resources county order to adjust payroll accounting period without changing existing pay dates. And thank you to the columnists here.
Good morning.
Good morning. As directed previously, we're here again this morning to discuss the potential of changing the payroll accounting period. And as I understand it, the commissioners' court asked that we need once again to further entertain any comments from our employees before making a final decision on this particular Late on Friday, I did receive some email correspondence from Wade. I had hoped that he'd be here this morning. Possibly Dave or Scott can shed some light on those particular concerns.
I think Wade is on the phone with the DOL investigator. He's sitting down since he got through.
So I assume that given that information, we may want to move forward and hear from employees and Wade to hear from Wade when he gets information from investigators themselves.
At this time, we'll entertain some input by employees. If you would limit your time to two minutes. Any of those who'd like to speak to this issue, please come forward to the mic. Don't be scared. Come with me. And please state your name.
My name is Megan Marple. And I don't know if I could ask you a question about our...
Sure. You're welcome.
Okay. We have been informed of the department that I work at, that a certain amount will be taken out of our first October check. And I was just wondering if it had been entertained about dispersing that lump sum maybe throughout the next year or X amount of months where it wouldn't be such a major deduction from our paycheck.
So, I'm sorry for your CSCE.
Yes, ma'am.
So Kate, do you think it would maybe be appropriate to open up the PowerPoint that we have here and maybe walk through an example since we are using the cost of living to offset that? Because I think that's a great question and definitely part of the clarification process that we want to make sure everybody understands.
Did you want to see the examples or the payroll schedule?
I think the example is her question. Now Megan, in your communication in your department, did you receive a handout from your department director with examples on there? Anything that maybe looks like that?
I believe it was something given in the headaches.
Okay. So Kate, can we maybe turn that question over to you?
Well, in this example, and it still stands to be seen whether CSCD can utilize the proposed process here. I'm not sure whether Terry has received any information or...
We have not received.
You've not received anything. The proposal actually indicates that the 2% COLA increase approved by commissioners' court, and I believe in CSCD's case, that's 4%, is that correct? If they could be included in this same proposal, then 2% of that total 4% increase would be applied consistent with the examples shown here, and the remaining 2% then would be dispersed over the 24 pay periods of the year. But for example's sake, let's say that that is approved to be able to do that. So what you see here is the gross annual salary, and we calculate the 2% increase for the 13 or 14, 15 year, the amount that would be dispersed over the 14, 15 year, and pay that in a lump sum to offset that one week adjustment period. And in every example that we pulled, that would offset it slightly more than what that one week period would be. Consequently, the total gross payroll for that first paycheck would be slightly greater than the normally scheduled payroll for that semi-monthly period. In CSCD's case, the additional 2% would then be dispersed over each payroll cycle for the remainder of the year. Does that make sense? If however, it's determined that CSCD is administratively unable to move forward with that, then the full 4% would be dispersed evenly over the 24 payroll cycles, and that first pay period would then be short, if you will, by that one week adjustment period.
And that's what I wanted to speak on, if we're not administratively able to do that 2% in a lump sum. I just wanted to express to you all the major, major financial strain it's going to put on us. Many of us live in check-to-check. Sorry. And we cannot survive pay or bills if we don't call a lump sum. And I just, if that happens, I didn't know if there was any possibility for us to be able to take that out of X amount of months or a year where we could pay our bills.
And thank you, Megan, you know, for being very honest and candid with the court. It really is appreciated, and I know it's difficult to come up here and the dynamics are difficult to speak into them. But what I will tell you, and Dave, you know, certainly, correct me here, other than the formal opinion from CJS, am I saying it?
CJ.
CJ.
Yes.
Other than the formal opinion from them, we've had our legal counsel review that, but do feel that we're in compliance. So maybe it's not fair to say at this point, but I feel like it's just an administrative approval that we need from them, but we don't have that answer today. And that was part of the reason that we gave an additional week, because we were addressing this last Monday, and we recognize that, because that was absolutely the question the first time around. And we wanted to provide an additional week for employees to be educated and to hear that feedback. Two things we were hoping to have back was the opinion back from CJ, so that we would know if CSCD could truly comply with that. But Dave, I think from our opinion, we feel like we should be able to. It's just a matter of getting their blessing, that they're kind of following that same protocol.
Yeah, but I mean, depending on what Wade learned from the deal well, I guess, but yeah, I mean, but I mean, we don't get to make that call for the probate. I mean, we are comfortable with the basic proposal, the legality of the basic proposal, but we can't force, you know, CSCD nobody. It's going to depend on what they say down today. But...
Please drop me a pose on holding off on making that decision until that is for sure? I mean, say worst-case scenario, we can't do that. Would our department be able to have that smaller amounts taken out over an X amount of time? Is that possible versus that one lump sum?
Kate, do you want to speak in terms of the timeline and what we're getting ready? Should this occur for October 1st? Why the timeline in September is important?
Well, we have to have time to reset our payroll system, to build those codes, to manage overtime rates, and also auditing needs time to get the annual salary information out. We would have to have information available and a firm decision by September 8th in order to be able to process. CSCD's salary increases are actually effective the 1st of September, so that 4% has become effective as of yesterday. So we really need to decide, have a decision one way or the other as soon as we can as to how to move forward.
So I think that brings...
Yes. Well, there's two questions. One, I think I know the answer, but why is there 4% and everybody else is 2%? I know the answer to that, but I'd like everybody to know that. Second question is, and I'm sure that your committee has looked into this, rather than taking it all, just move it back a day every month for six or seven months until it's there, I guess there must have been some reason that that was not approved when your committee was looking at it.
We looked at a number of different options. One of the concerns that I have specifically with moving one day at a time is one of the criteria that the DOL does set is when you adjust a payroll cycle or a pay period, when you make that adjustment, it's intended to be a permanent adjustment and not a this one for this month and this other one for the next month, correctly, if I'm wrong, Wade.
We didn't talk specifically about that scenario, but the regulation that exists, which honestly, if you look at it, one could argue doesn't apply in this case, because it addresses adjustments to a work week, and we're not changing our work week, but this seems to be one of the regulations that the investigators are looking at. It would, so, I don't think it applies, but they do, okay? Because again, we're not changing our work week. But basically, what the language says is this, an employer can adjust a work week, okay? You can do that, but what they seek to avoid is employers adjusting their work week to essentially cheat their employee out of their overtime compensation. So you can't keep moving your work week around to do that. That's the intent of the regulation. And for reasons that I don't understand, this is a regulation that they look at. This specific scenario that you're asking about, Commissioner, I did not discuss that with them, and did you...
I did. At the first conversation that I had with the DOL back a year ago, when the DOL contacted me, and I talked with Dave about it when it happened, but the investigator that I talked with on the phone at that time, we didn't get into work weeks because we were not adjusting the work week. The concern was adjusting the pay period accounting cycles or the day pay. And his concern, as expressed to me at that time, one of his main concerns was, are you intending to make this change a permanent change or is it temporary? And I said, permanent. He said, that's the important thing, and he had no problem with what we were talking about at that time. We did not go into work week at that time. That wasn't part of the conversation because we're not changing the work week. And that wasn't a question that he asked at that time.
Would y'all have anything to say on what I know and what I don't know? Okay. First of all, I can attest to the limits of the period. So thanks for getting to the national approval beforehand. After Kay disseminated her package of information, the department heads about contemplated change and how that might impact employees, Scott, you know, sent it out in our office. I got an email from a county employee and asking questions, and it made me consider, is there something about the wage in our laws that we and the county attorney's office missed the city on that they didn't consider? So I went back and began to look at the DOL's website, the law, the regulations, their guidance to determine if there was anything indeed we were missing. And on their website, in at least two different places, the fine language that basically says this, that in, not talking about overtime, but in employees' straight-line pay, that they're entitled that pay for the pay period that covers the week in which they earn that straight-line pay. I could not find that, I could not find support for that proposition in the law or in the regulations. So I studied this for a few days. There is an analogous law that does apply to overtime, and it basically says they need to be paid their overtime during the pay period that covers the time that they work, unless you need time, the employer needs time to calculate the overtime, and then you can pay them this late as the next pay period. I think what's going on here is the department is kind of over-reading their regulations. And I've asked specifically, two different people, can you show me the reg that goes to the straight-line pay? And nobody can put me on that regulation. So that was one concern. And I know it's probably people who lack deep understanding, you know, but Kay, and I've talked about, well, even if there were such a reg, what is applying in this case? And I think Kay's opinion would be no. Bottom line is this, with regard to that one concern, pay per straight-line pay during the pay period that covers that, the work, when the work was done, I don't believe that's an issue, and the department can't just put me on a reg. The other issue that I had is I looked at the regs, has to do with calculation of what's called the regular rate. And here's why that's important. And there are a few exceptions, things that don't constitute compensation from the employer to the employee that would not constitute a component of the calculation of the regular rate. None of those exceptions, I believe, apply in this case. But what we're calling the COLA would. So here's where that becomes important. If an employee works more than 40 hours in a work week, seven contiguous days, then they're going to be entitled to overtime pay at the rate of 1.5 to their regular rate. So my concern was, had the COLA that the court is considering, would it be contemplated in the calculation of an employee's regular rate so that if they work overtime and they're not going to get comp time for, they're actually going to be paid for, would we be calculating it based on the regular rate? I spoke with Kay. Kay spotted that issue a few months ago, and she's talked to people at Harris and Jim's, and bottom line is, she's got a solution for that problem. When I explained what I understand we're doing to the investigator, she said, Samson, you're good. Those were the two concerns that I had. That's where we left it in the conversation last Thursday morning. And I would not add here that in March of 2010, the Department of Labor decided that it would no longer issue opinion letters. It's kind of like if the court asks Scott for a legal opinion, you give him such facts and the law will give him opinions. Same thing here in the state with the attorney general, if we have a question, we can ask. Historically, the Department of Labor did that. In March of 2010, they decided they wouldn't do that anymore. So now, you're just kind of left to guess. They have their laws, they have their regulations, they have a lot of historic administrative interpretations that tell you about their law, but unless you can find one that applies to this specific case, and I have not, you're kind of left to guess, which is why I called the department in the first place. So Friday afternoon, I'm in on Kay and a few other people that I talked to, say, look, the concerns that I had, they've been ruled out. And after 5:00, when I looked in my inbox, I got a phone call from the Department of Labor investigator. He called Thursday afternoon, and I just simply didn't see the message. I tried to call him, let the cell number get you back, but we talked this morning. I asked him, I said, what is your concern? His concern still revolves around the COLA, how that factors into the regular rate for purposes of overtime calculation. Rather, rather, not overtime, but for calculation of the regular rate. And I asked him, I said, Mr. Salazar, I said, if we are not, if we're paying all of our employees at least minimum wage, and if we're correctly compensating them for overtime based on the adjusted regular rate, where's the violation? He said, well, you're kind of right. I said, can you point me to the law that says, you know, that backs what you're concerned? And he couldn't, but he says, he's talked about it with his supervisor, and if they were to do an investigation, that would be an area of concern that we have. Where we left the conversation before I came down was this, I asked him, I said, I explained to him last week, I said, the county has a comp time policy. Now, how, why did that policy is applied or followed, I don't know. My belief is we have a 100-hour cap on that policy, and we seek, not to avoid the law, but we seek to avoid paying employees cash for overtime and try to have them able to keep it underneath the cap for our comp times at that run rate.
Right. That's our goal. We attempt to do that.
And so I asked him, I said, so if during the fiscal year that this potential change in the COLA are going to be considered, if we can keep our, if our managers can manage their employees and keep them under that comp time cap, will we avoid this concern that you have? And he said, I think so. Let me ask my supervisor. And he was talking to his supervisor, and I left the room, and I've got a note. Okay. So what the note says is this, is that per the US Department of Labor, maximum hours per comp are 240 hours, and again, y'all have set our policy at less than that, at 100 hours. Number two says, as long as no payment was paid out in cash for overtime and a little comp time, you're all set. So there you go. So with that, I don't have any concerns. You got any questions?
The only question I have is, I feel like it's an outstanding question, that the DOL may have the factor of regular pay for overtime purposes. What you're saying, if we keep the cap at 100, which is what our goal is, and it's the internal policy, we should be fine.
That's the way I understand this note and all, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Your research.
Wait, I'm an idiot, I guess. I don't understand why this is a problem. I mean, if someone, number one, if we pay overtime, and those, and I understand we pay off a muster pay for share spartas, there are going to be some people that do that, why don't we, we've got, our program is going to calculate what their annual, what their hourly rate is on an annual basis, which is what they're giving them, and that will be the right rate, so I don't understand what issue.
To try to be clear, as I understood the issue, and again, he couldn't point me to the law or reg that backed it up, is that their regular rate would not be correct, that their regular rate would not reflect the COLA, because they're getting one lump sum. So for the next fiscal year, there's not going to show an increase in their regular rate. And again, I asked him, if we're paying more than the minimum and we're correctly compensating for overtime, what's the issue?
But we're going to choose, we're going to choose to understand the pay at whatever above the regular rate is.
That includes the 2% COLA, including the regular rate.
So it is going to be included in the regular rate.
That's why, that's why I don't understand this is the problem.
For overtime.
For overtime.
Okay, but that's not his concern. His concern is just for regular rate.
What does he care about that? As long as we pay, as long as we pay, as long as we pay our overtime?
I've told you as much as I know, and I just, I just didn't want, you know, our...
I understand, I'm just, you know, again, I'm not understanding some of your...
You and me both, Dave. You know, they're the investigative body, and whether we understand it or not. My concern is, if y'all make, I want you to, I'm with the county, to not make a blind decision. If there is a potential DOL issue, whether it's large or small, I want you to have that information before you make the decision. And right now, I, based on what I understand, I think probably, at least from a DOL perspective, okay to proceed if you want to, but I've told you as much as I know.
And I think in terms of just full transparency of the court, we've got an affirmation from Scott and Dave and Wade that we're within our legal parameters to make a decision, which is what we've been operating under the assumption for some time now, so.
I said, not for them, but sometimes I'm wrong. So I may just, you might want to consider that, Dave.
That your disclaimer, Wade.
That's it.
Scott, I do have a question, if I may. Back to Megan's question on the CJAD, waiting for their formal approval or disapproval. Is there any internal, have we made any internal calls from our legal department to try to, you know, pursue that, escalate that? Is there anything we need to do on behalf of the court?
I think we've done what we can do. I provided, with Kay's consent, I provided a copy of the opinion that I wrote to Terry, who forwarded it on to them for their review, and I think last I heard was we're simply waiting to hear back from them on whether they agreed or disagreed. And I'm glad to engage them in discussion, but at this point, we simply haven't heard a response.
Okay. And then I just have one follow-up question. Kerry and Kay, since September 1st is the timeline, that I guess the 4% became effective? Am I hearing that correctly? Is there any room, since that increase occurred a month before our fiscal year started, and I'm specifically speaking for the CSCD employees, because they are getting a 4% and not a 2%? Is there any room to offset anything? Should CJAD either come back with a nay decision or just not come back with a decision at all, and we choose to proceed forward?
I don't, yes ma'am. We have to be worried to do that without CJAD's approval.
So when the 4% becomes effective, is 2% is coming from the county?
No.
All four is coming?
All of the state, 100% of their salaries and pensions is state or locally generated.
Do we have any other folks in the audience who would like to speak to this?
I do want to say something, but I'm going to have to come up there because I have something to say. And I'll try to keep it to two minutes. And I'll try to keep it to two minutes.
Yeah. Give me all day. Carrie? How about a digest is, this money perceived CSCD, council of states? So their paycheck runs from the state.
The money for their paycheck countrywide state, they have contracted with part of county for us to administer it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm David Harder.
Wait, wait. Yes.
Our human resource department processes their payroll, they provide the salary amounts that once we get the total for their salaries and all of their premiums, the check is cut from, from their judicial fund and paid into the general fund for the rest of us. We have a contract, I believe it's dated one twenty eight, or eighteen eighty-four, that the county will administer their, their payroll, and they will participate in our retirement. That was approved state, and they did not get anything last year.
Okay.
All right. I'm David Harder from purchasing, just wanted to record. I wanted to make a few quick points. First of all, thanks for letting us have that extra week, because we did get to talk to employees at the department heads, and there were some concerns that came up, so we gave them time to digest that and get those concerns back to us. Secondly, we, the, the concerns, I'll just address those first. The department, the employees considered the COLA what it was labeled to be, cost of living adjustment. And I, I think that's where, at least a few of the employees in my department have a hard time understanding that, because when they hear COLA, they think you as a commission approved that to help them with their living expenses over the next year. Then, that's what a COLA, I think, stands for. And so, whenever they got the news that actually next year, realizing that we have a bad business practice, next year, they will be worse off, whether, whether you want to, to see that or not. And so, that's actually why I have this spreadsheet in front of you. We, the math on this spreadsheet was taken from Kay's example, and so there's actually another sheet that runs these numbers. And if you look at it, the way this was calculated is, is this first box, we, we took an average salary of someone making forty-two thousand dollars, I can change that salary in a lot of my code, I can list numbers for you to look at all this. If, the first box below that is the COLA, you approve two percent, that's figured into this as well.
Can you blow it up?
I, I think if I do, you won't be able to read the whole thing, but yeah, let me, I'll at least blow up the left side.
Is that, is that? That's a microscope.
That's, that's, that's Aggie Zoom right there.
Your article's disappeared.
I know.
That a little better?
Yep. Okay, so I'll show you this first box. So this first entire box was calculated during the payroll adjustment as presented by, as Kay. And so what this is showing is, there was an increase in health, in health premiums to the employee. Generally, employees have relied on that COLA to cover that increase in premiums. Without using that COLA over the entire year to cover that increase in premiums, this actually shows what the employee, for that annual fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, or two thousand fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, where they will be for their real net pay for that fiscal year. So it's, it's broken down by what health insurance category they're in, because that's, that's a fixed variable across the county, it, it doesn't matter what your salary level is, that's, you're, you're paying the same amount less than you were last year. So if you look at this, an employee earning forty-two thousand dollars over the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, an employee only will actually be less well off by a hundred and five dollars. And, and if you look at that, the, the net average to all employees, if you averaged that out, is two hundred and eighty-three dollars. So for, for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, each employee will, on average, have two hundred dollars less in spending power for that fiscal year because of this decision, if, if it's made. And, and I agree, it's a bad business practice, I, I realize it's a tough decision, but this is concern to the employee, I wanted to bring that to you. Yeah, go ahead.
Just to make sure I'm following the logic on the numbers, so you're kind of embedding the insurance premium, which is where you're coming up with this net pay loss?
Yes.
So what would happen, well, part of what's included in the budget is, the county has taken our fair share of the insurance increase. And so to that first example of employee only, I just did some quick calculations, the county's picking up ninety-one percent of the cost of someone's insurance for that. So what if, and that's been a general practice, but what I can say, at least from my experience in the healthcare industry, is I expect those numbers to go up. I'm personally a little fearful that this county may not be able to continue our fair share of that. What's happening in the industry of, that increase is being shifted to employees, and part of kind of our charge during budget, we continued our fair share of the insurance premium and said, we really want to try to include this in the budget, so the employees only feel a small increase. So I would be interested in that scenario if, you know, if we covered seventy-five percent versus ninety-one percent, and that percentage shifts as the premium goes up, because we pay a flat rate of six ninety is our county premium share, so an employee plus child is nine hundred and twenty-three, so we pay seventy-four percent.
And, and I understand that, and, and the thing is though, I, I think this decision, I'm looking at this fiscal year, I'm not looking at the future, I realize in the future, we may, the county may not be able to, to offset healthcare, I, I realize that prices are going up. I'm looking at the decision of changing the payroll for a bad business practice versus not doing it and using that two percent. The county, you as a commission of RHD, approved the two percent COLA and approved what we're doing. I, it's, it's, it's a fact that that's going to happen next year. So my second box, that, and to your point, that's what I wanted to show, if you do not make this decision, and you say, the county's lost eleven thousand dollars over, over three years, is it worth changing that? I just wanted to show you what the net effect was to the employee, if, if you don't make the decision to, to make this change. So I'll scroll over.
Have we lost eleven thousand?
Or eleven hundred, I'm sorry, eleven hundred, add an extra zero.
Be careful with those things.
I know, I know. So this is the same model, not taking, not taking that half week paycheck out and just dispersing the two percent. Actually, the employee's better off, I mean, it, it makes sense, because you're not taking half a week's paycheck away for the next year, but here's what the employee is better off, even including those, those healthcare increases. And so, the employee's actually better off, on average, five hundred and twenty-four dollars for that, for that whole fiscal year, by you not making this adjustment.
So will you help me follow that mathematical formula, because I'm struggling a little bit with the numbers, and I'm looking at Carrie. Help you out some light on that.
One thing I would like to add on, on the first box, with the change, you have to keep in mind that there, there is a delay of seven days, so it shows the negative two hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and that is true from January through December, but that employee still has eight hundred and seven dollars coming to them for that last week, you know, the week of the twenty-third through the thirty-first. So there's another eight hundred and seven dollars coming to them, it's just delayed by the seven days. So when you add that eight oh seven to the two eighty-nine, it works out pretty well.
Yeah, it's, it's about the same, but I.
But it, it's just the timing.
And again, it comes back to bills, I, you know, a mortgage, are they going to give you an extra week? I, I think that's, you know, it, it doesn't seem like a lot of money, I mean, for an employee making forty-two thousand, it's, it's about a hundred dollars a, a year, and, but for a family, and if you're the only employee, I realize two years ago, I was at the first team, and this would have stressed me out, I'll, I'll be honest. The, the increase in thirty dollars a month, when you're living and your wife's not working, it's, it is a burden on the employees, and so, that's why I wanted to show you these numbers, so you had something to compare it to. I, I also suggest, and if you do delay this, maybe use this system, if, if, I know, I don't want to ask for more money, and I realize that, but if you would have done a three percent COLA instead of a two percent, that's what I wanted to show you on this. And if you, if you lump these together when you're looking at the budgets, instead of taking them separately, if you put three percent in there, it actually wouldn't have hurt any of the employees in that bracket for the next year. The other thing you could have done is covered a hundred percent of healthcare and left it at two percent, and it would have had the same effect, it wouldn't have hurt anyone for this next year.
And raise taxes, we would have to raise taxes to offset that. So that is definitely a hard conversation to have in public, to explain to a property owner that has the same concerns about raising taxes because of their income, and to say, well, we, we needed to offset our employees, so it's, it really is a double, double edged sword.
I know, and I know that's a tough decision, but I, I felt like it, for my employees' sake, I was responsible for those decisions.
Yeah.
So I.
One of the things, one of the things that employees need to realize, and department heads need to realize, you're taking a week away from you now. Fifteen years from now, when you retire, your pay will be more than what it is now, and you will be paid at, for that week's worth of pay, at the level that you are when you are leaving. And you correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming it's, it's, it's going to roll, it's going to keep rolling through the system, so at the end of the day, the day you retire, say December thirty-first of this year, it's been a fifteen-year gap in there, you wind up getting a paycheck for the week you didn't get paid this year, fifteen years later, at the rate that you're making fifteen years from now. That, that being said, some people don't move that far down the road, and for some people, they don't have that far down the road to go with their money. I haven't got anything else to say on that, because I already said the other, other side of it previously, so I won't repeat myself.
Let me just clarify how that would actually work. I don't want to misrepresent that at all, that, that week that is deferred until the following payroll is exactly that, it's deferred to the following payroll. You can see from the example that's there on the screen, that the week of October ninth through October twenty, oh, I'm still, no, I'm sorry. The, the week of October ninth through October twenty-third, according to the proposed plan, would be paid on October the thirty-first of two thousand and fourteen, at the current rate. In radical scenario, the employee that works fifteen years and, and is retired and has another week coming at their higher pay rate, that is absolutely correct, in that that is the last week in which they work at whatever the pay rate is for that employee at that time. We're not holding this week until they retire or terminate or whatever. This week is, as proposed, would be deferred one payroll, and be paid on the thirty-first of October.
Because today, our practice is, Kay, is we, we provide payment for the week we expect them to work versus the, and then the model is shifting for the actual work time.
Exactly. You can look at the, the example on the screen, the first three columns represent the current payroll cycle and dates paid, the second three columns represent the proposal, and you'll see that all were, that, that the proposal simply cuts off the first pay period one week earlier, rolls that week to the beginning week of the second payroll cycle or accounting period, that second cycle would be paid on the thirty-first of October. That would begin with the ninth of October and run through the twenty-third. That just allows us that week of processing time, so we're not paying anticipatory time on the thirty-first.
And just to make sure that I understand, when we started this conversation, probably close to a year ago, and this conversation was entertained by the court, and we certainly had employee feedback, and part of what the employee said at that time is, there are two elements of a hardship, should this occur. If you change the pay date, because we already have items automatically drafted from our account, our mortgage is set up, our cars are set up on this pay date cycle, so if you change the pay date, that's an undue hardship for us, is what I remember hearing. The second to that is, if you make my paycheck a week less, and understandably, if you make my paycheck a week less in terms of pay, the dollars, that's an undue hardship, because I can't offset my bills for that, that pay period, that two weeks.
Correct.
And so, part of what has gone back is, this committee was established to start to look through scenarios of how we can address those two things. And so the proposal coming back to court, this budget cycle was, we're keeping the pay date the same, we heard what the employee said, we're staying by that, we're keeping it the same, we're fulfilling our premise on that, and then I'm paraphrasing, so keep me honest here. The second is, taking away a week's pay, because they, we can't pay, you know, our, our bills, that pay period. And with this model of using the COLA to offset that, then you're fulfilling that. We're, we're not asking someone to do without a week's pay in terms of dollars.
Correct.
Okay. And then Carrie, other than a business practice, which I know we've talked a lot about, that, I mean, just, just saying it, obviously, is a, is a bad business practice, that this is how we're paying a week of what we expect you to work versus actual week time. From an auditing perspective, will you help, help me understand, and maybe help the court understand, kind of where some of this conversation came from, too?
Well, basically, it is business practice, just the fact that we're paying people before the work period is actually completed, we had a small amount of risk there, not, not enough to warrant the change, but just to be able to pay for actual time worked was our main concern, not having to do everything in arrears.
Have you had any comments?
I did, I'm sorry, after I said them, some in, and I'd just like to lay it out there, if you consider this. Mind, does somebody say that SO employees are paid cash overtime for muster pay?
Yes.
Okay. So, based on this note, the Department of Labor, this message that you're going to get us, as long as we're not, not talking about cash payments, they think would be okay. What he said to me before I came down this morning, and again, I don't understand the legal basis for, for this position that the department seems to have, but we're talking about the regular rate, and if they think that the regular rate is not properly calculated, not for purposes of calculating overtime, or just the rate, the regular rate standing alone, that they would, that's something they might investigate, that somebody calls their attention to it during your period, during a pay period in which overtime payment occurred, so in any order. So when I say that there's not an issue, here, there could be, I don't, I just simply don't understand the legal basis for, they just know that it's pending and that it's out there, that we're, we're giving somebody cash compensation for overtime, they, they, conceivable that they could come in and look. And as, and as far as avoiding this problem with regular rate, he told me, he said, as they see it, there will be two options. Convert to a bi-weekly pay period, or just send the short to the employee on that first check and roll the COLA into overtime.
And that's what the Department of Labor has said to do?
Yes, ma'am.
To cut an employee's paycheck?
To, to, to avoid this potential concern revolving around the regular rate.
That's, I ain't avoiding some kind of problem, that, that's, that's, I'm sorry, that's absurd.
I agree. With that, I'll say.
Just, I mean, I understand, I think that you're in a department, just the Sheriff's Office that pays, that pays overtime.
We do have a small amount of overtime, or a handful of departments that do pay overtime as we go along, from the bridge, Sheriff's Office for muster, there are a few departments that pay. The way that we currently handle overtime is that the department director or elected official over that department notifies payroll when overtime pay is due, an employee, based on that forty-hour work week, which would not change in our proposition or proposal, and then payroll then manually creates an exception to our payroll to pay whatever hours are given us from that department director or elected official, times the overtime rate to calculate the pay. We have, and are in process of creating codes in our system that will calculate the two percent increase times one and a half times. So it would, it would pay the overtime. So it would, it would, um, pay the overtime at the higher rate, the corrected rate. I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the concern about the regular rate. That, that to me is.
Yeah, I understand what you said. I, I don't understand what law he's basing that conclusion on.
I just might add that during my career, we had a state that did exactly this on the, because we were only paid once a month. And so we lost almost a month's worth of salary and it hurt like heck. But, um, anyway, that's just personal experience.
I would add, I'm sure too, that I have also been a part of a pay cycle and, um, we received two weeks notification that your pay date was changing and it, it hurt like heck to echo the comments. But, um, I also did not receive a lot of time to really offset that in my family at the time. So, I mean, I definitely understand the employees' concerns. And I feel like regardless of the outcome here on the court shortly, um, the committee has really done an outstanding job to hear the comments of the employees and come back with a solution. Uh, not with whether everybody agrees with it or not, but what I can say from when we started a year ago to today and really hearing the concerns about the pay date changing and losing a week's worth of pay and offsetting that and how to kind of be creative, if you will, um, from my opinion, you've really done a good job on behalf of the employees, um, of feeling their concerns first go around. So I didn't want to leave that on the table and say.
Are there comments?
I, I want to, here's where somebody talked to me this morning. The fact of the matter is the paycheck rolls over, but the fact of the matter is they're getting paid for 51 weeks this year plus the 2% COLA to cover the 52nd week. When you take that, figure the case put together, that's for this one paycheck. The other paychecks, you're going to go back to the normal rate, which is basically what's coming out now, correct, Carrie? So what's going to wind up packing in, finish, while it's a little more money in that particular paycheck, once you take it back for the rest of the pay periods, back to what it's being paid now, that's where the insurance benefits increasing and that sort of thing is going to make the paychecks less than what they've been getting. So that, again, I think that's probably where they're looking for the COLA to cover everything. And what I've told a lot of people that approached me about it, if y'all do that, what you need to do is be smart with part of this 2% money you get to help balance it out through the, through the rest of the year. For some folks, that, that's going to be harder to do. I, I've got some last paid employees in the county. On that note also, I want to thank the commissioners for the COLA that y'all have given in the past, the district judges, DA's across the state, the elected felony prosecutors across the state. Did need a raise for 10 years. And before that, I think it was 13 years. So, uh, and I'm not complaining about that. I didn't stress the means. I'm just stating a fact. I think in 30 years, there've been no more than four raises for, uh, the district judges or the, which would include the DA's because our salary is based on theirs, whatever this area is. I know there's been no more than four, but I'm pretty sure it's only been three. So for, and then I got to tell you, when I started in the part of county, I think we did a roll of about six or seven years. There wasn't any, any adjustments in going in on it either. So I know this court for, for sure, the last 14 years that I've been around it, 15, 16, y'all, y'all have done a very good job, I think, of sparing the county's taxpayer money for the taxpayers, but also taking the hard, to do what you can for the employees. And I'll tell you, I appreciate it. It's not an easy decision y'all have to make up here when you start talking about the money. And I appreciate all the hard work that you did.
I keep your comments.
Is, uh, I guess the only question I have is are we ready to, to vote without the CJAD input or do we need to wait for that, uh, information before we take a vote? As you told me, we could take a vote, uh, our next meeting, which is Monday. I just don't want to throw a que, or is that necessary for us to wait?
That's, uh, I've had, that's entirely up to you really. I mean, it's, uh, I mean, if CJAD didn't approve it and they get, they just get their, you know, their check, this goes on and they, they're saying, we, 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 they, they, they need to be uncovered. They won't get the, like we do on our, as well. So that's the only thing that matters.
Well, I think it would be nice to have that information prior to making a decision. Um, but I, I definitely hear the concern of, you know, we need to make a decision to prepare for the timing should this occur. But back to Megan's point when she addressed the court, I think it's helpful to have it. Uh, and again, I, I lean back on my comment to Scott, if there's anything we can do on behalf of the court to indicate, not that urgency, because I think sometimes that has a negative connotation, but we do want to be very transparent with the employees as, as always. Uh, because they definitely, being the CSCD employees, have a very different impact than what we're talking about county wise. So I do think that's a fair question.
Since it's state money, we have the authority to decide how it's going to be split.
Well, they have to follow our payroll process because of their contract.
Their contract does say that.
Kate, taking that into account to Commissioner Kelly's, uh, comment, should we allow some lead time for CJAD?
Um, we certainly could allow up to, um, the next commissioner's court on the 8th. Um, that would be, uh, in my opinion, about the latest that we could wait to make a final decision. Um, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, you, um, you would have ample time to, to work the auditing in, uh, if we waited until the 8th. Uh, we would be, uh, the 8th is also, uh, cut off for, uh, the, the 15th payroll as it exists today. And so, um, we would have to move very quickly, um, on the 8th to, to begin working the CSCD increases, um, as to whether they're 2% spread over the 24 cycles or, uh, 4% spread over the 24 cycles or the 2% plus the, the advanced, uh, 2% COLA.
I guess I have another question. You know, we've, we talked about this issue last, our last meeting. And why, why don't we have an answer for them at this meeting? Anybody answer that?
Commissioner, I did get an email from Terry and one of the legal, uh, people that he works with at CJAD is out on leave. And one of the others was out of the office until this morning. So that made part of the delay. But what I'm, I'm supposed to be back in the office this morning to look at it right away.
And with or without the, the com, comments from them, we will make a decision on the next meeting period. Okay.
I was just going to add, Carrie or Scott, if you need, certainly anyone from the court, not to volunteer you, but Commissioner, um, as you oversee the HR department, it may be helpful. If you need a member of the court, if not, certainly you're fully capable of proceeding forward.
Richard, do you know the legal folks at CJAD? Is it going to make any difference if we contact them? Or do you feel like they'll get to it as quickly as they can?
Yeah, they'll just get to it. Yeah. I, I don't think it's going to make a difference if we, you guys contact them or not.
Okay.
I think timing is just an issue with many people out of the office.
But, uh, we, uh, I guess probably on the table is, oh, I'm sorry.
Is there any opportunity, and this may be a bookkeeping nightmare, I'm just asking, is there any opportunity for this just to start for new employees only? And as the old ones retire and leave or whatever, that that would?
That would mean two separate payroll cycles. It would be, logistically, it would be a nightmare as we currently, uh, we would have to have additional staff to run two payrolls. I mean, there's, there's no, there's no way around that one.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask.
I still have some people in the audience that, uh, are from employees. And any of you have any final comments? I think at this time, we're not, uh, yes?
I would just like, I'm Matt Crandall in purchasing, and I would just like to echo, um, what David Carter said that, um, this pay rates, the 2% pay rates that was approved, um, doesn't, in my opinion, does not feel like a pay rate because of the increase in that pay.
Now, you know, without the 2% COLA, we feel it.
It a lot worse.
Yeah, a lot worse. Sometimes we have to bite the bullet and, you know, proceed. So we, we can't please everybody. That's for certain. But we can certainly do the best that we feel like we can do for our employees. And I think we, we have done that, uh, for a long time and we will continue to do that.
Thank you.
Let's hope that we can make a decision today, but.
Uh, one more, one more week couldn't hurt.
Why didn't we mean?
Well, we didn't. We, we felt like we, we had that, uh, information from CJAD, but we don't have it. So at this time, I think we're not ready to go around the issues. So we'll table it until our next meeting. Thank you all for being here. It's now 10:05, 10:04. I have this been, uh, meetings in here. Thank you.
Kate, you'll give agenda item for court?
Yes.